Coincidence that we're seeing all of these trends shift in dramatic ways upon him taking office. There was a, there were policy decisions that were made to increase the reach of our criminal justice system and to sweep more predominantly black and brown young people up in it. Okay, I feel like I'm just gonna get worked up if I keep asking questions on this. So I'm gonna shift gears to staffing, which is another one of my, the things that I've been most fixated on over these two years. The decline in the city workforce. Many agencies, many agency sections in the PMMR identified understaffing as a primary cause of their inability to achieve their goals. So agencies were acknowledging they don't have the bodies to do the work. Staffing is explicitly cited as a factor behind several performance declines. Most notably, the Health Department conducting 11 fewer percent restaurant inspections and their ability to control and conduct, excuse me, to conduct tuberculosis control activities has been severely impacted by their lack of staffing. The Department of Buildings' average response time for Priority B complaints has decreased by two days, almost 20% increa-, sorry, increased by two days.
Still on target.
Still on target, much slower, not a helpful thing when we're moving in the wrong direction. And so, and I could literally pull out every line in the PMMR, as I'm sure you all looked at, where agencies cited staffing as a primary factor in why they can't do their jobs. His operations recommended, as a result of seeing that trend, which I'm sure you all did, that agencies be allowed to fill more vacancies and hire more staff to address specific concerns like tuberculosis spread, restaurant inspections, and the like? Especially to address vacancies that are impacting critical health and safety issues?
I do wanna be clear that operations is mostly the reason you know that information.
I'm happy that we have it. I'm not criticizing you for it.
For sure, yeah.
I'm asking what we do about it.
Totally, and I'm not even saying it defensively. It's part of the process of generating the report is insisting that agencies be candid about, about the roots of their performance issues. And so we're proud of the fact that staffing is explicitly mentioned many times. I have a tab here in an entire section. So, so we are involved in some of the flexible work policy. Our project management team has been heavily involved in that and in some of the, some of the recruitment efforts that, that decast staged to really facilitate hiring. You'll, you'll see the decast numbers have actually improved in terms of numbers, civil service exams, and the timeliness by which they, they complete them. There are some staffing success stories in the MMR. I would point to the HBD Housing Maintenance Section in terms of their inspection units. Set almost every record in terms of the number of inspections, the number of complaints closed out, and the number of issues remediated. And, and that's a really big deal because people had been avoiding inspectors coming to their homes for several years during the pandemic. So, so I, I think that there are success stories that we could point to, but, but that we're glad that you have this information and, and I think it's appropriate to raise this issue.
Are you tracking total headcount citywide? Like, is that something, I don't, I don't think it's a data point in the PMMR specifically or the MMR, but is it something that you're all focused on?
Yes, but it's something that we, that we have in our data systems, for sure. It gets complicated, obviously, when, it gets very complicated, to be honest, because there's a lot of temporary employees, there's H&amp;H, and, and, and so it's actually very hard to get two people to agree on how many people work for the City of New York, but, but we do track that.
And is the Performance Management Team engaging, or the Project Management Team, on strategies to hire more and to track and, and kind of developing specific strategies where the lack of staff are impacting goals?
Yeah, the Project Management Team has been assigned to, to, to that work over the past couple of years. And I'd have to check on the exact status of, of their involvement, but, but that has been a major focus of their work.
Okay. I mean, I just, I, I will just cite some of the examples that are in the, that you have as well, I'm sure, but that are concerning to me about some of the staffing impacts. You know, at DOI, they're seeing a 16% increase in background check completion time and a 45% decrease in the backlog investigations getting closed due to limited staffing. At, I mentioned some of the issues at the Health Department around their failure to control tuberculosis spread, to maintain the restaurant inspections. There's been a decline in pest control inspections by 23%. This is one of the things that the mayor purports to care about more than anything else, and we're seeing a 23% year-over-year decline in pest inspections due to the lack of staffing in the Health Department. Individuals served by co-response teams, which is something that I care a ton about. The cash basins inspected by DEP, average time for DOT to process permanent applications is up by 24%. The, so I just, I guess the question I wanna ask on this, because these are all really concerning trends. Is Ops involved, considering that you're tracking this information, focused on it, bringing accountability and transparency to it, that the Project Management Team is thinking about strategies to increase hiring? Like, are you involved in the conversations around PEGs and budget cuts and like the impact that these are having on services, the hiring freeze decisions, the two-to-one replacement policy? When the mayor is saying that there's gonna be minimal, minimal disruption to city services due to the seven rounds of budget cuts, we just see a different story here. And you know this data better than I do, you understand these trends better than I do. What is Ops doing about it? And are you all, I mean, like, to help reverse this?
Well, when it comes to this ocean of data, you know, we really feel like it's our first and the highest responsibility to, to make sure the deputy mayor, the respective deputy mayor is aware of the problem and, and is, and is, and has the information they need to make informed decisions. So it's sort of a different answer to each one, but I can tell you that DM Isom Williams is one of our best clients and was actually, you know, very aware of, of the issues that you mentioned and has been working closely with the Health, Health Department to resolve them. She didn't ask for our involvement necessarily, but we're always, you know, game, give, you know, capacity's always an issue, obviously. I think our Project Management Team has a sterling reputation and, and figuring out how and where to use them is, is really difficult and tricky. And I mentioned that I do think they add the most value in inter-agency work, and so when a deputy mayor wants to work directly with one of their agencies to, to resolve something, that, that's certainly their prerogative.
That's helpful and glad to hear that it's on Deputy Mayor Williams Isom's radar and that she's focused on trying to address it. And we'll follow up with the Health Department during preliminary budget hearings to understand how they are addressing it. We certainly appreciate that if she's involved, it should be helpful. And you feel that across the board, you're getting the responsiveness that is needed from deputy mayors when identifying these kinds of troubling trends?
We've never had the strong an audience. I do think it comes from the top in terms of what, what's expected of people and, and what's required to manage a, a city as large and complex as, as this one. You know, each agency is the size of a local government, and, and I think there is a, a general confidence that data is really the only way that we can even aspire to, to get all the signals we need to make informed decisions. So, so I am very pleased with, with the, the audience we have and how seriously the, the data is taken.
And just in connection to where we started the conversation this afternoon, yes, some offices have been shifted out of Ops, but you, like every other agency in the city, has, an office in the city has, you know, seen some belt tightening and reductions in staffing. If our Performance Management Team was expanded, if our Project Management Team was more than just nine people, would that help in better addressing some of these issues?
I never turn down resources and, you know, I think we'll never be able to tackle every problem in city government, but obviously the, the size of our Project Management Team has real implications for, for their capacity and, and they punch above their weight.
I always think it's important to invest in the portions of city government that can have broad potential beneficial impact. And when you've got a strong Project Management Team that can help address crises and work through issues, it really does make a difference. So I would certainly be supportive of that.
And if I could just say, because you know the organization so well, it, really what we're trying to establish are the sort of stronger connections between our teams in, in the sense of they're serving as, as resources to one another, right? If the Project Management Team needs to measure something better in order to know whether they're successful, they have a, a team of experts that can help them develop indicators. If somebody needs to run a regression analysis to see if, if, you know, if, if what's the real cause of something, we have really, you know, high-powered data analysts that can do that. And so the, the long-term vision is for us to be, complement one another. And in a perfect world, we're, we're generating work for our Project Management Team through the surveillance we're doing with Performance Management. That's the world we wanna live in and to some extent, we're, we're getting there.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that, in my experience, the units were siloed and the units would bring issues to deputy mayors, and if deputy mayors cared, then it would ping back to potentially other units within Ops to help. And having deeper integration across the office seems really smart and, it seems like a smart and sensible thing to do from a management standpoint. I'd like to shift gears to perhaps one of the least surprising, but still incredibly one of the most disappointing indicators that was in the PMMR, and that relates to the processing of SNAP and cash assistance applications. You know, recognizing that we've seen an increase in SNAP and cash assistance applications, we still found that only, that only 40% of SNAP applications and only 14% of cash assistance applications are being processed on time. This administration has failed to address the issue for nearly two years, despite litigation, despite multiple rounds of council oversight hearings with agency leadership from DSS. This is just an enormously important issue. You know, I, I started my opening statement by highlighting the nearly 2 million New Yorkers who are living in poverty, the 1 in 4 children who are in poverty in New York, and we're failing to get them the cash assistance and the food stamps that they are eligible for, that they deserve, that they need to keep lights on, to keep themselves fed, because we don't have the staff in place to do it. It's just very, very disappointing. Has the Ops Project Management Team been working on this and what have you been done doing to try and help address this crisis?
They have been directly involved. We, we, we knew this was a crisis before it was making headlines or the subject of lawsuits. You know, our reports have been, have been transparent about what's going on, that there is a combination of, of more applications and avalanche of demand, really, for the reasons I mentioned before. There, there was a backlog of recertifications, there was serious staff attrition and retirements following the pandemic, and, and actually those workers are not easily replaced because they, they require some federal involvement. And, and so, you know, this unprecedented demand for benefits really did, to some extent, it was a perfect storm when, when you consider the staffing issues of the pandemic and, and the data bears that out. We're proud of the fact that the Legal Aid Society in, in their complaint cited the DMMR. If you look at their lawsuit, they're, they're relying on the data that we generate, and that's the reason the data exists, is for the public to hold the city accountable. The, the first deputy mayor and deputy mayor have been directly and very seriously involved in this issue, again, before it started generating headlines. The Chief Efficiency Officer is involved in this work. It, it really, you know, that, that office does specialize in, in sort of methods of process improvement, and this is one of those areas that was ripe for, for that skillset. Obviously, the numbers have been incrementally improving as DSS continues to aggressively hire, train, and redeploy staff. There, there are a number of process improvements that are in motion, but, but we're probably not the best party to speak to them. But it, it's been, it's all, it's sort of using every lever possible. It's, it's hiring, it's technology, it's legal and operational strategies that, that, that DSS could describe in more detail, but it, it's been a full-on approach, but clearly there's more work to do.
Yeah. I mean, I will tell you, in my years of having worked with the team at HRA, I used to describe that agency as one of the most effective and nimble agencies in city government. And, you know, when Lisa Fitzpatrick, the former HRA administrator testified before the council last year, she said, "Never in her 40 years at HRA had they had so few staff." And for what are primarily federally funded benefits, to not have, for us to be failing to have the staff in place to connect people to the resources that they deserve, it's just incredibly painful and disappointing. And I get that it's not easy to fix these problems in a, with a, a magic wand, but to see marginal improvement in, over years is a clear indication that this has not been prioritized and taken as seriously as it should be. And for an issue of such magnitude that is hurting people so much, I really, really hope that the mayor on down starts to, to prioritize fixing this much more seriously than has been demonstrated to date. I had a whole lot of questions I wanted to ask about homeless, housing for homeless individuals, but I wanna, I recognize that it's already 311 and I have a lot of questions. So I'll try to go quickly. I'm gonna redo, I, I'm only gonna ask actually about NITRA occupancy. So I, we saw in the PMMR that occupancy is down in total NITRA units to 96.5%, down from nearly 99% in FY '21 when the mayor came into office. NITRA metrics, though, reported only 94.23% occupancy at the same time. I was just wondering if you could speak to the discrepancy there between the NITRA metrics and the Ops metrics in the PMMR? And generally, I'm very concerned about the tenfold increase in vacant NITRA apartments. I don't believe that you're tracking the turnover time and the vacancy as, unless I'm, forgive me if I missed it, but it's the number of vacant NITRA units, I don't, I didn't believe was tracked in the PMMR explicitly as a hard number. I was just wondering, is that something that you're all thinking about, considering how much attention and how problematic an issue this, this has been? Is this data that you're interested in tracking moving forward?
I think it's a great suggestion. I, I have to take a closer look, but I believe that you're right, that we don't track the raw number of vacant apartments. It's a really important input, you know, for, for us, you always want to know your denominator. If you're measuring how fast something's done, you wanna know how many times we're doing it and need to do it. So, so yeah, we should take a look at that. There was something else. What was the other one? Oh, yeah, it's coming up, right? Oh, very good timing, council member. So, you know, we have this cohort process, I, I mentioned it at a high level, where we're subjecting each agency this kind of very involved review, where they have to realign what they're measuring with what they describe as their mission and their functions. NITRA is actually about to go through our cohort, and so it's a really good moment to, and I know they have their own story they wanna tell in the sense that they've created new systems for responding to, to tenant problems, and they feel like they have a much more robust data infrastructure to generate performance data from. So I think we, we're gonna have a real opportunity to improve that chapter.
I hear you. I just, like, the approximately 5,000 vacant apartments is one of the most troubling trends that we've seen over these two years. It was under 500 when the mayor came into office, and it's about 5,000 today. So that is a just huge increase. I recognize that there are some changes in, like, paint remediation that have slowed things down and made things challenging, a little more, that have, that have contributed to this. But ultimately, this is a question of resources and management, and 5,000 apartments could house 15,000 homeless people, right? If you gave 100% of those units over. Or you could do half for folks that are special populations, or folks, you know, exiting DHS shelter and other, you know, DV shelters and other places, and half for folks off the waiting list. It could be a huge housing resource, and it, it should be. And I, I believe this administration has reduced the percentage of formerly homeless people that are going into NITRA housing as well, which is a, an area of real concern. So I do think, I appreciate that you're focused on it with NITRA management. There's been some reporting in the press since our last oversight hearings on this that NITRA's central management getting involved in trying to address this issue hasn't made much of a difference because we haven't seen the data improve. I, I think we need help on this, and it's really, to see such a valuable resource of deeply affordable housing sitting vacant when it should be helping people out of shelter, it, it just, it needs real attention and swift, and swiftly. I will, I'd like to focus on a couple more topics briefly, not in great depth, but one that's near and dear to my heart are transportation indicators. We have seen the number of bike lanes installed go from, I think it's 47.7, down from 62 in FY '22. 20 point, 25.9 of those miles are protected, 33 in FY '22, so a decline there over these two years. Bus lane miles installed, just 7.8 miles of bus lanes in the PMMR, down from 12.9 in FY '22, down from 20.5 in FY '21. Bicycle fatalities are up, 18 to 29 since last year, and up again over the first four months of, of the year. Total fatalities are approximately flat, 263 to 260. So, and I, I think it's, it's been widely reported, it's not a PMMR indicator, but that no new bike or bus lane proposals have been made by the administration in many months. And so Vision Zero has been a major priority articulated in the, in the MMR for years. It works, it could save lives. We're seeing the beginnings, in my opinion, in, in the PMMR data of things moving in the wrong direction, and we know that the, that the next set of data that you all release is gonna be far worse. Are you helping to try to reverse this trend? Is there anything that can be done to start making protected bike lanes and bus lanes a priority again for the Adams administration?
Operations is very proud to still have Vision Zero in our portfolio, and it's one of the most important issues to have cross-agency collaboration on because DOT can be as brilliant and committed as it wants, but you can't achieve Vision Zero without enforcement and, and, and other levers that, that agencies bring to bear. On, on the data side, you know, these are, are issues that we've escalated. I think the big caveat that we wanna give is that the, I think it was approximately 15 miles of protected bike lanes that reported in the PMR was actually the highest total in the history of the PMMR in a, in a quarter. So they did perform well in that respect. They did not perform well in respect to targets that, that were created, that they would, that DOT would say was not with their involvement. And, and, you know, I, I think our agencies always kind of, you know, resent when, when targets are set through a political process that they're not engaged in. And so I'm channeling DOT to some extent on, on that, but, but just objectively that, you know, there, there were other.
I do, I just have to say, I think that the now commissioner of the Department of Transportation was like the lead sponsor on the Streets Plan legislation that set those benchmarks, and so it's a little funny for him, or for them, to complain that they don't like the political goals that were set, that he was responsible for setting. But I digress, I apologize for interrupting.
No, it's okay. I was making a broader point, too, because we have several targets.
I know you were. You gave me an opening on that one, and I took it, so I apologize.
I'm gonna take this opening that the, the first deputy commissioner of DOT, Margaret Forzio, when he started off as an analyst on our Performance Management Team, and that's how she got to know DOT, and that's how we're gonna create the next generation of, of city leaders.
I love that.
So we're very close with them and, and.
I feel like people always tell those stories about OMB analysts, that like go on to be CFOs and, you know.
That's because everyone thinks they'll get funding if they hire them. But I think you're right.
But the Ops stories are good ones. I didn't know that about Margaret. I like that.
I know, I know, and, and it's really, should be an inspiration, I think, to us. But the only other thing I wanted to say, what else is, there isn't one other point? Oh, just that there were other legitimate highlights in, in the Vision Zero sense in this PMMR. I think, you know, stuff like the bike parking spaces, the, the pavement safety markings went up exponentially, like hundreds of thousands of square feet, and these matter. They're, they're all contribute to street safety. They're not as, you know, as impactful necessarily as a street redesign on a major boulevard, but, but I think they, they think very holistically about the issue and, and address it from many different angles. You know, we have a very strong data working group as part of Vision Zero, where so much of the, you know, so much of the work in Vision Zero is driven by, is driven by what's happening in, in, in the field and, and our research, and, and so we're always happy to, to dig deeper into those issues, but, but.
I hear you. I, look, I think DOT does a great job on their street redesign work and safety improvement work. The trouble is that when they need City Hall approval, they can't get it anymore. And that's the, the fix, that we need somebody, whether it's operations or the mayor, to, to help intervene and to get these projects back on track so that we can start making Vision Zero a reality in New York City. There was a whole hearing on class sizes yesterday, so I don't wanna dig into it too much, but I just have to say, it was very notable in the PMMR to see every single grade from kindergarten through high school saw average class sizes increase year-over-year. And at a time when we're three years out from a significant new mandate from taking effect that will reduce class sizes, I'm just interested, is Ops working with DOE and SCA on strategies to help facilitate compliance with this new requirement? Is this something that, is this problematic trend being considered by current leadership on, you know, not only do we need to comply with much more ambitious goals, we need to figure out how to start moving things in the right direction?
The, the only mitigating data point I would offer is that the number of teachers did go up this cycle for the first time in a couple of years, which was a, a really troubling trend coming out of the pandemic, that the city had, you know, had, for years had been hiring more teachers and suddenly had fewer. So that, that's a very important trend and a key toward getting to class sizes. Obviously, the number of students went up and.
Which is a good thing.
Of course, and.
And for the first time in a while.
Exactly. And, and following the pandemic, it's exactly what we wanna see. But, but, but yes, these are hot topics within City Hall, class sizes. We actually do have a meeting coming up on the topic, but we're not actively working on it right now as an office. But, but it's something that DOE feels like they have real command over, they feel very confident they're gonna meet the state requirements, but, but we're not directly involved in that work.
I would like to just shift gears to ask you about some of these new offices that the mayor has created, that we invited to come to testify today, who refused, who wanted to leave all the fun to operations. But in particular, I'm interested in the Chief Efficiency Officer. So Mel has left, Denise Clay is now the Chief Efficiency Officer. My understanding, my recollection from the executive order that created the role was that they are charged with developing updated metrics to improve government transparency, performance, and accountability. If I hadn't told you in advance that that was from the Chief Efficiency Officer Executive Order, I, and I told, if I were to ask you, is that to describe the mayor's Office of Operations? Imagine you would've said yes. So it sounds pretty darn duplicative to me. Could you help me understand how you all work together? What do they do that's different from what Ops does? Did we just create another office that is, got the same mandate as the mayor's Office of Operations?
So we were involved in the decision as to whether they'd be here today, and, and I don't wanna represent the work of those offices fully. I do wanna describe the work we've done together because we did fulfill that, that, that component of the EO in the sense that the, I think it was 150 customer service indicators that were added, was a very involved process that was partially driven by that office in coordination with us. They, they were the ones that essentially came up with a new paradigm of customer-centric measurements and a very legitimate critique that the MMR was missing.
Was that Masha?
Masha was involved, and, and it was a very productive engagement because they were right in the sense that so many of the customer service indicators in the MMR are from the perspective of government and allow us to sort of break down components of, of our response, but don't necessarily represent the experience of, of the customer. You know, the truly, like, how long did the thing take? Not, how long did it take us to get there, that sort of thing? And so, so many of the new customer service indicators represent that sort of customer-centric paradigm that they developed, and we worked closely with them. Beyond that, I can't speak to their current portfolio. We do have somewhat of a division of labor in the sense that they really are strong on process improvements and, and on the methods of lean six sigma. And, and so some of the issues that you described today are those types of issues and, but, but in terms of the MMR, their, their involvement has been limited to those customer service indicators, and, and, and to some extent, they've been involved in the cohort review process. There's one more thing that, that we should say. No? I don't know, I can't remember what it was.
Could you just speak to how does the work of their? Could you just speak to how does the work of their, it just, their, their charge sounds like the same as operations to me? Can I, I just, I know this wasn't your decision to create the office, so I'm not asking for the kind of analysis behind that. But I do want to understand, is this entirely duplicative? I mean, I, I appreciate that they were helpful with customer service related indicators, that's great, that sounds like a positive thing. Um, but how does your work complement, how does their work complement yours? Like, what are they doing?
Right, um, I, you definitely should direct that question to them, but, but in practice, we do-
They wouldn't show up, so you're all I got.
We do have a division of labor i- in the sense that, um, that, that their core strengths really are process reform and, and ma, and, and, and making um government, um, taking existing processes and, you know, studying what types of um either parallel processes or, or, or other kind of interventions, um, you know, automation, technology. Um, they, they come at it with every um lever, but, but specifically on process improvements. And, and that's been their focus. And, and I think um when you hear from them, you'll hear their portfolio is, is mostly focused on those sorts of issues. And, and we're always um very keen to share um performance flags that we see with them in those areas. Um, you know, I think our, that our project management team has those skills, but we also have a number of other um instruments and, and skills at our disposal.
And I, um, one of the things I really enjoyed when I was preparing for this hearing, I think the last time there was a MMR PMMR official hearing was twenty seventeen.
Oh, no, I saw that transfer, yeah.
Did you? I did too. So, um, uh, and one of the people who came to testify at that hearing was my first chief of staff, uh, Marianne Alexander. Uh, she was then with the CBC, she then worked on the performance management team at Ops, so maybe some of you know her.
I just, I gotta say, she was a key member of the team that did the, um, she worked on the dynamic, that the, I would say the antecedent to the dynamic management report, the very earliest stages of, of even conceiving it as like an interactive web tool. She, she did really invaluable work.
So she included a series of recommendations in her CBC testimony from seven years ago, which I have not consulted with her if she still agrees with those recommendations, after having worked on the MMR and having dealt with me. Um, but, or having had to put up with me, I should say. Uh, but I thought they were very thoughtful recommendations, and I just was interested in your general feedback. Um, one was to increase an emphasis on outcomes rather than kind of, like to better track the impact of services rather than inputs and outputs. Two was focusing on efficiency by developing cost measures in service areas, which was something uh former controller Stringer also had recommended. Uh, and thirdly, connecting city spending on services with service outcomes, so investments are better informed by agency performance. Um, and fourth, I think you actually did quite a bit of on the customer satisfaction side of kind of citizen satisfaction measures. So, but on the first three, I, I, interested in your perspective over seven years, do you think we've gotten better in those areas? Is there still opportunities for improvement in those areas, and what could that look like?
I'm not exaggerating when I say we hired um her because of her um work at, at the, at, at um Citizen Budget Commission on the MMR, and we thought they were great recommendations. And we want um people to work on the MMR who, who had the experience of, of engaging it from the public. Um, Lauren Quinones is one of those people who um worked for the former speaker of the city council and also used the MMR as an instrument um for, for policy scrutiny. Um, what are we talking about? Oh, yeah, Marianne, oh, yeah, these recommendations, no, no.
I think the, um, I think we have improved things over, over time. Um, the thing that I want to mention is on, you meant, you asked a question about outcomes and like our indicator spread. We're currently in the process of actually tagging all of our indicators, twenty-two hundred of them, it's taking a little bit. But thinking about, is, is this indicator an input, an output, an outcome? Um, and trying to adjust accordingly. Not everything in the book is really a performance measure in its truest form. A lot of the indicators that we have are context um to the performance, and we think that that's just as important. But we are making a solid effort to really understand the, you know, what we have and how it all breaks down and make some improvements where we need it.
And I'll give you a candid answer about the hardest one to tackle that's the most important, which is the relationship to the budget. And, and, you know, in a perfect world, it would be easy to understand, um, you know, the sort of performance, um, the level quality of service of a very specific government function with its spending. The way OMB approaches the world is through units of appropriation. And those are very important for the budgeting process and for how they organize their work. It doesn't correspond perfectly to the, to the way that agencies might approach their own programs, or definitely not the way the public might interpret um, um spending categories. And so that we see is like a, a much larger problem that we're very serious about tackling. OMB now has a, a deputy director of management um for the first time. You know, I think it was a recognition that the M in the acronym wasn't always a, a kind of, it's their, their strength. And, and, and his name's Teddy Gordon Martin, and, and, and we've begun a dialogue with him about how to sort of approach this as like a, a much larger structural problem. Um, but it's a, it's a very important point.
Yeah, I do think in an ideal world, there would be a much better connectivity and linkage there so we could make that analysis together in an informed way about what we're investing in and why. Certainly, there are a number of areas that we highlighted in our conversation, you know, in the hearing today, such as NYPD overtime, where it'd be really helpful for the agency to make a better case for why this is the best use of a billion dollars um relative to other budget cuts that the city is experiencing. So, um, uh, I appreciate that, I'm glad we had a chance to have a fun conversation about Marianna. Um, and I have just a couple closeout questions that are just clarifications on other items that, on items that you mentioned earlier in the, in your testimony. Do you have more detailed traffic data uh than, I think it was the crossing data that you referenced that you thought was contributing to the slowed down response times?
Yeah, there, there's a lot of data, DOT has a very sophisticated system now called Inrix, um, very expensive. And, and they now have the ability to track vehicle speeds on most major corridors and, and, and they're seeing a widespread congestion. It, it really is in the major quarters in all five boroughs. Um, so there are ways now. Um, you know, we also track, um, the, the MMR actually does have one indicator on average speeds in Midtown, um, which is specifically sourced from TLC cars, um, which is a cool indicator. And it's slowing down um a lot in Midtown. Um, but, um, so yes, we could substantiate that claim and, and have done the research.
Okay, I think we might be interested in figuring out how to make that more publicly accessible data. So maybe that's something for us to figure out. Um, last question I just wanted to ask is, the category of quality of life summons, um, are you able to provide a breakdown of which summons, which types of, I believe it's a combination of civil and criminal summons that are combined in that category. And if you'd like to provide this as a follow-up in writing, that'd be fine. But if you could, just let us know exactly which summons are captured there. Does that include all the CJRA summons? Um, we're just very interested in that data point in particular. Um, so if you could break that down for us, we would be very appreciative.
No problem.
Um, I just want to say that uh, um, I sit up here and ask a lot of questions, but almost all of the smart ideas that I get come from Molly. And so I just want to thank her again for being such an amazing partner. Um, and I really appreciate it, Molly, so thank you. Um, any further comments on your end?
No, just that we really do embrace this, this um relationship and, and, and look forward to, to, I, I hope democratizing the, the MMR going forward in, in the sense of making it a real object of public scrutiny and, and something that's shaped by the public as much as anything else.
Well, I think that you really demonstrated that in how you approached this hearing and how you testified today. So I just want to appreciate, um, I just want to say thank you to you uh as well as to uh the first deputy director, Ms. Quinones, for being like not just willing, but enthusiastic about testifying today and trying to provide meaningful answers to all the questions that were asked. It's not an easy feat to be responsible for twenty-two hundred indicators. Um, but you did it. And I do just want to close uh this portion by recognizing your all's work on the DMMR. It's a really big deal, and it's a good thing for New York City that you all have created it, and I want to thank you for that work. It's, it's very meaningful.
And Lauren, I honestly, I just have to say, um, led that process from beginning to end and, and, um, and so much more in terms of how we've have built the capacity of that team. And so I did a lot of the talking today, but anything that I took credit for was actually um something that Lauren pretty much did, so.
Well, thank you both, we really appreciate it. And thank you to the whole performance management team from Ops, thank you for your hard work. We've got another panel of great folks that are coming up, but um thank you guys for being here, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, we'll give the administration a couple minutes to gather their stuff, and then we'll turn to public testimony.
Hey, come. Kevin Shearhardt, Sophie Ambro on your staff, is that? My first job was working for her dad at the paper.
No freaking way.
Yeah, he's one of my closest friends to this day.
Really?
Yeah.
I like couldn't like function on a, any, for an hour.
She's fantastic, and ask her to bring in a copy of, of his local paper. It's one of his- Do you really? That's awesome, that makes me happy. That's awesome, thanks, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, we will now be turning to public testimony. Uh, the public panelists will each have three minutes to speak. Uh, you can begin once the sergeant has started the timer. And if a council member has a question for you, um, please make sure to turn on your mic by pushing the red button at the bottom. I will now call our two public panelists, Michael DiMarco and Anne Callagie.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you both so much for being here today and for your patience, we really appreciate it. Um, would either of you prefer to go first? Just press that button.
As long as the red light is on.
How about that?
Perfect.
Okay, very good. Um, so, good afternoon, my name is Anne Callagie, I'm from the Legal Aid Society. Um, the Legal Aid Society really appreciates having the chance to testify here, and we will be submitting written testimony, which will be in greater detail than the few comments that I'll offer now. Uh, I am the Government Benefits Director uh in our civil practice. And so part of our government benefits practice, as you may know, uh, is aimed at serving the neediest New Yorkers in their obtaining and maintaining their SNAP and cash assistance benefits. So, um, I also very much appreciate your focus on the, the need for those benefits for those living in poverty. Um, HRA is the agency we work with. They have legal mandates. Their legal mandates include processing applications within thirty days for cash assistance and SNAP. Uh, their legal mandates include processing what are called recertifications for assistance uh for cash assistance and SNAP also within thirty days. Um, if you know this already, I'm sorry to say it, but uh when somebody is on public assistance, they have to periodically recertify their eligibility. Um, the other thing they're mandated to do, which uh we are focusing on because it's a problem, though some of these problems don't appear in the management report, and that's a problem. Um, HRA is mandated to issue emergency or expedited SNAP benefits for those who qualify when they're applying. And so that somebody without sufficient funds and no food are supposed to be able to get expedited SNAP in seven days, rather than waited the entire thirty day period. Um, they are woefully, they're, they're failing in their mandate to issue those benefits in a timely way. Um, courts have generally held that substantial compliance with the timeliness mandate is uh ninety-five percent. So you see the percentages listed in the management report. They are so far below substantial compliance. I do hear that HRA doesn't think that is substantial compliance, and the mayor's management o- office of operations doesn't believe it's substantial compliance. But the question is, what can be done about it and what is being done about it? Um, one of the things is, the process of applying and recertifying and seeking benefits involves three steps for anybody who's trying to do it. They have to fill out a form, submit documents, and have an interview. And the processes that HRA uses really create barriers for-
Please feel free to continue.
Sorry, for the public who are trying to get these benefits. So, um, they have an access HRA online portal. Uh, not everybody can use it. Uh, they're, and they are no longer really providing paper forms for people to fill out. And they don't provide uh truly sufficient services to do phone applications. Uh, to upload documents requires some technology, though a person can go to a center and upload them there through the scanner. The problem we're finding is people have uploaded their documents, and then their case gets closed or denied for the failure to submit documents. So there is some disconnect in HRA's technology that needs to be addressed. Um, and then the other big problem is the phone system. So that if I need an interview, um, and HRA has a backlog of applications or recertifications to deal with, they may be dealing with the backlog, but the numbers are telling us there are tens of thousands of denials for failure to have an interview. People cannot get through on the line, they're waiting for hours. There is one callback feature that is easily missed. If you choose it and you miss your callback, you go back and call again, you just spend hours. People don't have minutes on their phones, uh, for one thing. So it's very distressing, people are doing their best, it's not their fault that they've, something failed. Uh, so, uh, we have proposals in our testimony for improvements, my time may be done. Um, uh, one thing, um, we were talking about the need for transparency, and, and we appreciate the committee's emphasis on that, and we appreciate the mayor's management Ops people uh saying that's a, that's a thing. Uh, if HRA had to report monthly on the delays in applications and recertifications and offer a corrective action plan anytime it goes below substantial compliance, that essentially is what happens when we have no other recourse but to sue them. We end up with a correction, corrective action plan. So why don't we proactively have them do this? And let's try to make it work before we get to that point where thousands of people are out of benefits. So that's just one um, uh, proposal that we have. Uh, the rest are in our testimony. Uh, one involved three-one-one, which I was interested to hear because three-one-one just sends people who need HRA's help to HRA's one number that they can't get through on. So we were sort of hoping three-one-one could be utilized to access uh the HRA uh system where needed. Okay, um, the rest of our recommendations are in writing, and uh we do appreciate again the chance to be here today and look forward to collaborating further to improve these issues.
Thank you so much. And I will have some questions, but we'll hear from, from Mr. DiMarco first.
Thank you. Thanks for taking this hearing today. And thank you for letting me testify. Good afternoon, Chair Reston and fellow members of the committee. My name is Michael DiMarco and I am President of Local 1455 DC 37. Local 1455 represents the New York City traffic employees who work in the Department of Transportation in the following titles. City Parking Equipment Service workers supervising city parking equipment service workers and traffic device maintainers. Not only do my members ensure the safety of the public through maintaining traffic devices and street signage, they are also a revenue generating title for the city. My members collect the revenue from the parking meters, now munimeeters, and ensure the meters are functioning and working properly. This is a big source of income for the city of New York. Furthermore, my members who install and hang signs ensure that streets are labeled properly, which allows the traffic enforcement agents to properly issue tickets for parking violations. Also, the public, sorry. Currently, my membership is down by at least 60 members. And as a result, this is impacting revenue collection by the city since they are a revenue generating title, category. I am sure the public is not complaining that there are lesser people to repair parking meters, but the city does suffer by not being able to collect revenue. Furthermore, the public will complain and file lawsuits that could cost millions of taxpayer dollars if the life protecting devices aren't installed, like stop signs. If a citizen is injured or killed by a missing sign, vision zero, that's going to cost the city a lot of extra money. We only get three days to hang a life protecting device like a stop sign. So with these vacancies, you could see what I'm talking about with vision zero. In conclusion, the city announced that they will begin to backfill vacant positions at a rate of two-for-one, meaning for every two positions that are vacant, they will hire one person. Even though this is good news that the city is hiring again, this will impact revenue collection in the long term since they are hiring less people to fill vacant positions. We urge the administration to backfill all vacant positions in order for proper revenue collection to occur. The city is losing millions of dollars by not backfilling these positions. Thank you for holding this important hearing, and I will take questions if you have any.
Well, I have to say I am like truly appreciative of you both coming to testify and sharing your expertise. I'm really interested in learning a little bit more. Would just like to begin, and just help me on the pronunciation of your last name, Anne. Is it Callagie?
Callagie.
Callagie, thank you. I feel like you are the person in most demand for this hearing because the delays in processing of essential benefits is one of, if not the most problematic of all 2,200 indicators in this report. And New Yorkers are really struggling. I just want to first ask, could you share an update on the status of the litigation? Has that helped to resolve any of these issues?
So, yes, there is a preliminary injunction in effect in the Forrest case. And that, under that, there is a schedule for HRA to reduce its backlog over months. So it began maybe in October or November, and each month they were supposed to reduce it. And they are reducing the backlog of recertification delays and application delays. The concern we have is how is the backlog being reduced? So is it, and according to these statistics that were obtained under the city council's local law, there was an extreme increase in denials for failure to have that interview that I was describing where you can't get through on the phone. So the backlog may be decreasing, but we are concerned about how is it decreasing? So they may be complying with the letter of the preliminary injunction without improving the quality of decisions that are being made and issuing benefits to eligible people. The other piece is that we have a contempt motion in the Reynolds versus Giuliani case, which was a longstanding court order on the issuance of expedited SNAP benefits. And so there are ongoing negotiations in that case, and I'm not sure that I can give you more of an update than that.
No, that's fine, and that's helpful. I think firstly, we would love to get your input on what indicators should be tracked by the Mayor's Office of Operation in their Mayor's Management Report, their preliminary management report, but most of all, in their dynamic Mayor's Management Report, which they testified to today, which provides more frequent updates on the, to all of us to be able to access. And I think perhaps there's an opportunity for us to track more granular indicators that could give us a better understanding of how New Yorkers are accessing the benefits that they need. So we will definitely follow up with you on those specific recommendations in writing that we can share with the Mayor's Office of Operations. But secondly, I just want to highlight some of the operational challenges that you identified very clearly. One is on the technology fix. Do you, are you under the impression from your conversations with HRA that they can handle this issue themselves or they're in the process of doing so? Is this something where Ops or potentially the CTO's office may be needed to develop the right technological solutions?
We have talked with HRA, and you know, I want to say when they say that they've been aware of the problem, they have, because we've been working with them all through the pandemic. So it's not that they don't know and we didn't know. It's just nothing was really happening. One of the things that would help on the, like any technology, if there were real-time help for people who were using the access HRA portal, and I don't, I'm not a technology person, but a chat feature, some way to reach HRA to say, this didn't work for me, this is telling me I need to do something else. It's not clear to me what I'm supposed to check off. But there isn't any real-time help? That would be good. People are, many people are sophisticated, but many people are not. And then, I don't know, there need to be improvements in the whole HRA info line one number. And I think a lot of that is a staffing problem. If they had more staff people, the wait times would be reduced. So when I'm listening to 311 calls that are appalling because you wait 10 minutes, people are waiting two hours.
Oh, absolutely. And that data is in, some of that data is in the PMMR.
Yeah.
We did call it out today as the most disconcerting of the kind of failed customer service data trends. Well, I think one of the things that we can definitely follow up on also is that, you know, during the hiring freeze, the Mayor's team kind of celebrated that folks who were responsible for benefit enrollment were spared from the hiring freeze, which really just meant that if somebody left, if somebody who was actively in a job left it, that it could be replaced. Not that they were going back and filling all of the vacancies. But I don't know if the folks who were handling the call center, which is a really important component of helping to address these delays in processing times, were protected from the hiring freeze. And we should make sure that, and we have our preliminary budget hearing with HRA a week from Monday on March 8th, which I'll definitely be there, and would love to follow up with you in advance of that hearing just to make sure we're putting Commissioner Park and Administrator French, you know, on the hot seat with the right specific questions on these issues. But I think we'll definitely push on the hiring front on these fronts. I think I misspoke there, but we'll push on the hiring front on these, in these areas. And technology-wise, appreciate the suggestions. We'll also ask questions of HRA on that to see if there's, how that's progressing and what more can be done. But I really want to thank you for not just coming here today, but for offering very specific solutions that would help. This issue is, it's both heartbreaking and it's a very clear example of terrible mismanagement. And so we have to get it fixed. It's been going on for too long. And I really hope that we can work together to get it addressed promptly. So thank you. And Mr. DiMarco, I'm so appreciative of your testimony and of the work of your local. You do essential work to keep people safe. And I'm very interested in just understanding a little bit more in how we can help work together to make a case to DOT and to DCAST for how we can get these lines filled. So just to give me some context, you say you're down 60 members. What's the denominator there? Or what's the total number of members?
We, my, at one point, it was a lot higher, but the total number should be around mid-twos.
Currently?
Between both, the three titles. And we're vacant about 60 members, at least, just about 60 members. There is a list out there.
So mid, mid-200s if fully staffed, but we're down by 60 people from that? Is that the right way to think about it?
Yes, yes. We're, the three.
Okay, thank you very much.
We're normally over 300 members, and we're way down from that.
So normally, it's over 300.
Correct.
And now you, we're way down, at least 60 off from where we should be.
Yes.
And I appreciate that these are revenue generating positions. The Mayor's Office has said, till they're blue in the face, as has the OMB Director, that they're not, there's no hiring fees that's impacting revenue generating positions. But that's not the case. Could you just help me understand if, the life and safety stuff aside, as important as that work is, just on the revenue side, if we do down 60 people, how is that impacting us? It means that when a parking meter breaks, these are the guys that are going out to help fix it?
There's the two titles. One of them are the collection portion, who collect the physical quarters from the parking meters.
Got it.
And then there's the traffic device maintainer position, which installs, maintains, and repairs all those munimeeters in the system. So, you know, being down the number of people and collections.
And just so I, can I just probe on that?
Sure.
So for the munimeeters in particular, because I imagine if, unless the, 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 the device can't accommodate any more quarters, then OMB would say, well, if it takes an extra couple of days for somebody to pick it up, we're not losing any money. But if the munimeter is broken and it takes longer to get it fixed and functional again, then that's money that the city's leaving on the table.
Absolutely.
And do you, are you able to track or offer any insight into the timeframes worsening or lengthening to get munimeeters fixed?
Well, the prob, part of the problem is, you know, there are projects out there retrofitting the munimeeters. They're in the system a long time. So there's over 15,000 of them in the system now, replacing over 73,000 single space meters. So they're all fully munimeeters, but, you know, there's retrofitting the meters to come up to the standards that they should be today. And there's also re-timing projects, which is, for argument's sake, if you're putting a quarter in for 20 minutes, now the re-timing, and that might not show in dollars and cents on the city's end. But if you're not doing the re-timing with the people, instead of, you know, what they want to re-tim from 25 cents to 20 minutes to 25 cents to 10 minutes, that's revenue. There's not enough people, and it takes longer to do.
Interesting.
Besides the retrofit project, which if we were full-staffed in meter maintenance, which is one of the divisions, from what I understand, the project, if we were fully staffed, would take two years when it begins. We're behind already. With the staffing levels we have now, four years. So which means to bring total up in overtime. So there's a, there's a, there's a big difference in what we could do.
Wow.
With this staffing. And that's just the meter end.
It's, I think that if we can think about any creative ways together to quantify what, you know, the response times to get things fixed or to update policies on new rates that are being charged, we can then go back to OMB on pushing and to DCAST, to push to say, we have to move this faster. We've got to move this up the list. And one of the agencies that's under the purview of the Governmental Operations Committee is DCAST. We have a hearing with them on Tuesday. So this is definitely something that we can dig in on further and really want to help across the board, and really appreciate Susan being here as well. We want to be focused, we are focused across the board on working with DCAST to improve the speed at which we are hiring more folks. But especially for titles like yours that generate revenue and save lives, we're really interested in figuring out how we can work together to provide better data to the agencies to make the case that they've got to move 1455 up the list. And so if there's any additional information that you can share with us, both on the revenue side, but also on if it's taking, you know, I, I've seen anecdotally in my district, we've gotten complaints from DOT leadership when we go to them and say, you know, you're supposed to install this stop sign or you're supposed to install this streetlight or other safety devices that are supposed to be installed to make our neighborhood safer that were approved. And they're telling me about a delay that's, they don't, they can't get it done for a year or something like that. I mean, I don't know, does your team do streetlights as well?
We don't do streetlights.
Do streetlights, that's contracted out. Okay, so the signage. And the safety devices, do you, not the, do you, are you involved in moving around any of the red light cameras or no?
No, no cameras either.
No speed cameras, no cameras, devices?
Yeah, it's highway signs, basically, all street signs in the five boroughs. We paint the lines in the streets with street markings, you know, we do, I can, we go on and on on what we do. It's a very diverse title.
I have to say, it's, transportation is among, it may be the thing I'm most passionate about. And the work that your team, that your members do, the work that your members do to make our streets safer is saving lives. And I really value it. So if there's any ways that my office and I can celebrate and recognize your, your members and the work that they're doing every day in our community, it really matters. And like we just were, I was so happy to see DOT take some pictures of folks who I assume are your members installing crosswalks and a mid-block crossing on Atlantic Avenue in our district. And they like took a photo as if they were the Beatles from Abbey Road. I don't know if you saw any of this. It was so good.
Hopefully, it was ours, because some of the work, the paint work is contracted out, which is another meeting, but.
All right, well, we.
Yeah, but we do love it.
I will tell you, before I got appointed to this position, Henry and I had a conversation that we need to prioritize outsourcing together. So that's another conversation for us to all have. We will definitely have it. It will definitely be a subject of a hearing of this committee in the not distant future. But I am, I really want to help on this. I really appreciate you coming to testify. Let's figure out how we can get some more granular data that we can really push the leadership of the appropriate agencies to try to make this happen. Because when your members are down, our streets are less safe, and that's not a good thing for anybody. So thank you both. We really appreciate you taking the time to testify. This was really helpful. I know it's a long wait to get to testify, so thank you for your patience.
Just one other thing.
Please.
I was talking about, you know, we're talking about the retrofitting and the re-timing. With these projects going on, if most of the employees, my, our members, are doing that project, it takes less time, it takes more time away from the repair side. So, you know, that weighs into it too on, you know, getting the operable rate up. So I just wanted to put that in there.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you both. Have a great afternoon.
You too.
No, okay.
Seeing no additional witnesses here in the.
Susan, you don't want to testify? No, you're good. Okay. You're the only other person here.
Or on the zoo, if you'd like to offer any closing remarks before you close out.
Just want to thank you all for coming. This was a fun hearing. I really enjoyed it. And there's a lot of great information that we have today to dig into. So this is hopefully going to be, it's a good precursor to all of the budget hearings for the month ahead. Thanks so much.